Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wyatt.
Here.
Sewell.
Here.
Reister.
Here.
Bunz.
Present.
And Lawson is absent.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Recording in progress.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Mary, you've got the 2022 Iowa Public Library General Information Survey.
I do. Another year gone by. Ah, it's amazing, isn't it? It is. Things like this always remind me of how fast it goes.
Matt, Lori, we'll just keep a copy of City Hall for you.
Okay. Lori, here's one for you.
Thank you.
Just go through some of the highlights, then I'll just point out a couple other things. Not a lot of changes this year over last. There's still some effects of COVID that have affected the numbers, the bottom line. Some in better ways than others, but it's definitely swinging back to normal.
Good.
So that's a good thing to see. Our library increased in size. They're in A-12 on the first page. In the size category, when we population passed 2,500, we bumped up the category in the state libraries' size matrix, so.
Does that do anything for us or for your numbers?
Um, you know, I have to redo the accreditation for the library as once every three years. That's due February 28. I am not sure if I have more standards, if that's gonna make those standards, you know. More hoops to jump through, but we pretty much met all the standards anyway, so I don't think it's gonna have a large impact on me. You know, a lot of it goes to, are you handicap accessible? Do you have good hours? Those sort of things. And so those are always gonna be good, so. And B7, total number of paid staff, is five. That was, we still had Zach on, but didn't have Ambry who replaced Zach, so. So that pretty much stayed the same as last year. It should jump up a little bit next year and be more around 3.0 or so. Because Jo went full-time starting about July 1st. She went to 35 hours a week, so. So we'll have a little bit more there. Cellular information is in that next section. You go to the C section. Capital is income, capital income. We did receive some of the ARPDA money, the COVID grant money really. And we use that for the security cameras, for the outside of the building. We do still have the capacity to add a couple of security cameras on the inside of the building if we decide that we need to. We're kind of borderline on that right now. There is a lot of controversy in the public square right now about.
Privacy.
Well, no, things in libraries. Some people want to regulate what you have access to, to review, all that. We had at least one book disappear that probably was a victim of that. We have found a couple other books that were, one kind of hidden behind the other books on the shelf, so people couldn't find it. Another one today in a way wrong place in the library, so if you were searching for that book, you wouldn't have found it. So there's some stuff happening in a sly kind of way. I learned at conference this year that's called guerrilla, guerrilla censorship. You know, yeah, it's not in your face, they're not picketing outside the library, but.
Little subtle stuff.
Yeah, they're helping themselves in different kinds of ways, so.
Can't be accused of theft that way.
Yeah, right, right. The capital funds are right below that. The $10,745 were for the outdoor musical instruments. That was funded by the foundation.
Which is wonderful.
Yeah. I love them. I love it when I can hear somebody, when I'm on the inside and I can hear somebody playing on the outside. I've had, when they were patching the street out here, the construction guys were up there playing. It was fun to see somebody wearing the work garb with the reflective vest and everything, playing the.
Jake.
D section is income. Our county income was up by $12,441 this year. That's probably a lot because, still because of COVID, because we didn't close. We did have a month where it was out-the-door service, nobody was allowed in the building. But we didn't actually close the doors, so we did pick up some rural residents from other library areas in Blackhawk County where they just drove down to Hudson. That's kind of swinging back, I think, so that'll probably go back down a little bit next year, but we'll see. Total operating income received is in D60, and that takes into account county, state, and local. And then the next page is expenditures. It has employee expenditures, physical collection expenditures, and then it gets into the electronic collection expenditures. A lot of that is through the consortium, that is a statewide consortium. We also purchase electronic materials outside of that consortium. I can get onto Bridges and log on as administrator and see if I have patrons who have holds on electronic materials in the consortium, then I can purchase them. I have it set so, and then they go to immediately to our patrons first. And I have it set so that then after a year, it goes into the consortium collection and is available to everyone then, so. So then our patrons have that while it's still a new item. It's stupidly expensive. You know, a new John Grisham book would cost me $75 to $80 for the electronic version. They really take advantage, so. And then poof, they go away after a couple of years. You don't even.
It knows they're on you.
Yeah. In D36, that is electronic information for our databases. That includes the transparent language database, the World Book Online, Heritage Quest and Ancestry databases. Heritage Quest and Ancestry is funded, both funded by the foundation. And then the foundation also funds, you know, a portion of the book purchases too. They give us money every year for books. E05, E5, that is Bridges eBooks held at the end of the year. That increased, that's in the consortium, that increased by 40,000 titles this year, 40,335. So there are now currently 97,973 eBooks available to our patrons statewide, you know, whatever communities opt in. Total eBooks at the end of the year is 97,986, including what we own personally. Audio books, the total downloadable audio materials in E15 is 39,793. And of course, that's again outside of our physical collections, so. It's a wonderful thing that we have that consortium and it makes that many library materials available to everyone at any given time. The section that has other items in like E28, at 402, most of that is our library of things. That's things you can check out from the library. Things included in that are a microscope and slides, projectors, an 8mm, a 16mm, and slide projector, screens, a multimedia projector. We have a portable photo studio, like if you're taking pictures of things to sell online and you need good quality pictures with the lights in the background. Wi-Fi hotspots, we currently circulate three of those. We have some games like Unsolved Case Files, which is like an escape room activity in a bag. Sporting things, we have soccer ball, basketball, volleyball, football, bocce ball set, bucket ball, croquet, discs for the disc golf course. Pickleball and pickleballs, paddles and balls, a tire pump for bike tires, a game called Spike Ball. So those get, occurs a lot, the outdoor activities get a lot used in the summer.
Check out a lot?
Yeah, in the summer especially, you know, the disc will go and the balls. The kids like to check out the football and those sort of things. Yeah, and that's a constantly growing collection too, so, and that is primarily funded by the foundation. They do a lot of good for us. Circulation is the F section. Total physical circulation by material type was 16,898. Total use of downloadable materials was 3,198. Then it has a retrieval of electronic information that's the use on those databases I mentioned. Inner library loans, section H, or excuse me, F30. This year we received 256 inner library loans from other libraries in Iowa. And we sent out 513 materials to other libraries in Iowa. Another great program that just expands our capability for accessing, you know, there's really very, very few things that someone might come in and need and ask for that we can't get for them one way or another. So that's pretty wonderful. We have that expanded capability over the years. Total number of registered users is 3,587. We add new people weekly. Door count was up. This might be partly attributable to the swing back after COVID. But it was up by 6,220 for a total of 24,545 people through the door.
Is that normal before COVID too? Cause I remember it being really high before COVID.
Yeah, yeah. It's not all the way back, but it's, yeah, it's a definite jump, you know, so that's good. You know, people's habits changed during those two years, and so you worry that they won't pick up where they left off. So it's good that they are. Reference transactions. Public internet computer use was up again, 1,800, so that's at 3178. Wireless users was 2,477. That is up 227. On F48, it's website visits, that was 4,417. That was up 756. We get good use on the website. Jo is the one, it's hosted by the State Library of Iowa. Jo is the person that keeps that current on our end, and she does a really fabulous job. And with that and with the social media presence. She's a good PR designer. The next main part is programming, and they asked a whole lot of questions to get down to a few things. In G19, there were 54 programs for preschool-aged children. Attendance was 316. In G40, there were 95 programs for children age 6 to 11 with an attendance of 953. And then in G79, there were 195 programs for adults with an attendance of 1,195. And then in G, the end of the G's, well, not quite. G107 and 108. Total number of live library programs was 344. Total number of people attending those was 2,464. We don't do a lot of electronic programs. We tried during COVID and we just don't get attendance. And, you know, it's not cheap to get those speakers either, you know, they're charging you $300 a pop and nobody logs on, so we just, we haven't even tried that once we were able to go back in person. The last section, well, the summer library program attendance. Well, maybe that's not on there specifically. The last section is building hours, square footage, most of which didn't change at all. And they do still ask some COVID-related questions. If they're just trying to get a handle on where libraries are at and what's up in that realm. Questions like, do we, you know, check out hotspots and things that, you know, came around because of COVID and. Couple other things I want to point out is the Dolly Parton Library. It's a, it's a Blackhawk County libraries thing. We did it jointly with all the other libraries in Blackhawk County. Much credit goes to Kelly Stern at the Cedar Falls Public Library. She really got this off the ground for us. On, as of October, we had 84 preschoolers enrolled in the 50643 ZIP code, which is 44% of the estimated eligible. And that was the best out of all the ZIP codes in Blackhawk County, so Hudson's doing really well on that.
Awesome.
It costs about $25 per child per year to have that program available to them. Our foundation funds our ZIP code based on estimated numbers. So they started out with a donation last May of $3,000. And then we'll, we just assess that, you know, when we have foundation meetings and when it comes to, you know, when they look like that's, you know, gone, been spent down, they'll contribute more. We will have to constantly be raising money for that. We need to, we need to find some more time to write grants. Because we want it to go on forever, but at those kind of rates, we have to constantly be throwing money into that.
For those part, they count.
For those that get, what, like a book a month or something like that? They get a book a month from the time they're registered until the time they turn five years of age.
That's fantastic.
In the mail. It is fantastic. And we recognize too that there's a big disparity in communities and neighborhoods, even within Blackhawk County. So, you know, the biggest value might not even be in our own ZIP code, you know. It's, it's value to every kid that gets a book a month. I can't imagine the excitement. I remember when I was young, I got a magazine once a month, you know, it's a big deal, so.
I'd love for you to look into like the Guaranty Foundation for that, cause I think that could be something that's right up their alley.
Yep, so, anyway, we have to get a handle on how to keep that going, but just, it's just the time. Library Journal recently came out with Starred Library Reviews, and we came out 78th out of 916 nationally for our budget size. And in Iowa, in that category, we were third.
Wow.
Yeah, only, what?
So that's saying we're giving you too much money or not enough?
No, I don't know how that would play. If you had more, if that would move you down, if your circulation was less, I don't really know. Ambry sleuthed this out. I never paid that much attention to it, but she was all excited about it.
Well, yeah.
Jefferson, Iowa and West Branch, Iowa were the two libraries in Iowa with a similar size budget that were ahead of us, and they were just one and two spots ahead of us.
Your sister's on the library board in West Branch.
Oh, yeah.
We'll tell her, congratulate her. She did good on the Starred Library thing. I will.
So that's fun. That's fun. And I need to, she, Ambry sent this to me. I hadn't even looked at all the, I mean, there's a lot of categories. So I'm curious to spend some more time with this.
Celebrate that with your team though, that could be awesome.
Definitely. We definitely will. So do you have any questions about anything?
I don't have any questions, but just thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, and thank you for your ongoing support of the library.
Pass on the thanks to the staff and the board too.
I will, I will.
And I love your scarf.
Oh, thank you. You will.
I know.
You will. You bet.
First round admin committee meeting.
No, lines, clubs, not coming.
We met on November 28th. First item on the agenda was the 2023 holidays, and that is also on the agenda for tonight to approve. We did add a couple of holidays, and, but that is because of the diversity of our current staff and allows staff to participate in holiday activities. Second item discussed was City Hall office hours. That's on tonight too?
Yep.
Yeah. And new hours will be 8 to 5 on Monday and Thursday, 8 to 4 on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then 8 until noon on Fridays because there were a lot of Friday afternoons, we just didn't, nobody here. Nobody came, no, no citizens came in. But this allows then, because now we're open that extra hour, so if citizens need to take care of something, they can do it, you know, between 4 and 5. Next item that we looked at then was wage increases. It was determined that cost of living was set to increase by 8.7, and we were thinking maybe we should go 9%. I think some of us felt that can't really probably justify that right all in one time. And so we proposed then we go either with an increase, increase by a certain percentage, or do we look at a flat raise rate and then take a look again, like in July, after we do the appraisal performances and go by that. And I think you'll see on tonight that we did, the committee then did a little further work and to increase then by the dollar 50 an hour, so. And then, let's see, what else did we? Talked about comprehensive plan goals, and we'll take a look at it a little bit more in the future, and we adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Gail. Any questions for Gail?
Holidays that we added, which do we add? Juneteenth and something else?
Yeah, because.
Juneteenth and whatever happens in January.
Martin Luther King.
There's one between Martin Luther King and Memorial Day now, but I don't remember.
President's Day.
President's Day.
Is that all with Legisities? Did they put those on there too? Okay, that was the only thing I missed.
And, and as was reported in the minutes and stuff, the banks aren't open, the post office isn't open. It's just not like you could do business, so.
Yeah, and then as far as City Hall hours, we'll talk about that in a little while, just to keep track of if there's any complaints, obviously, or anything, we can always adjust.
Exactly.
And it doesn't affect the hours by the staff, it's just when the doors are unlocked. Any other questions? Thanks, Gail. I'll open the public hearing to add Chapter 102 to the City of Hudson Code of Ordinances, and this is the FOG for fats, oils, and greases program. Any written comments?
No.
Any oral comments? Close the public hearing. General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to weigh the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance 877, ordinance amending the Hudson City Code, Chapter 2017, Chapter 92, Water Rates, Section 92-02, Rates for Service, kind of a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In discussion? Rule call.
Sewell.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Or Reister.
Is he paying attention?
No, he's on mute.
Matt, you're on mute.
Yes, aye, sorry.
You're okay. Bunz.
Aye.
4-0?
Yes, 4-0, sorry.
Item B, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance 878, ordinance amending the Hudson City Code, 2017, Chapter 99, Sewer Rate Charges, Section 9901, Sewer Service Change is Required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item C, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 879, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa by adding Chapter 102, Fat, Oil, Grease, Fog Program. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Rule call.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried 4-0.
Item D, discussion action to approve Resolution 3008, a resolution to approve the 2023 holiday schedule as Gail had mentioned.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Rule call.
Sewell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried 4-0.
Item E, discussion action to approve Resolution 3009, a resolution for approval to set hours for City Hall. Again, this is Monday and Thursday, 8 to 5, Tuesday, Wednesday, 8 to 4, and Fridays, 8 to 12.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
The only question I have, just one quick, you said that it's not affecting the hours that you guys are working, it's just the hours the doors are unlocked?
It decreases the hours that are, that are open, or that the office is open by two hours. Instead of being open 40 hours a week, we're only, we'd only be open 38.
And Katie is 30 hours a week.
And I.
This is exempt.
Yeah, so, and I.
But usually puts in more than 30.
Obviously, you put in more than that. The only question I had was if you're here, if, if somebody's scheduled to be here, there's no reason the door shouldn't be unlocked, right? Well, I mean, why would it make any difference if the door?
Then you gotta, then your, the advantage is, say Chrissy's got some stuff she wants to do after 4 o'clock. She's still here, she's working, but now she's gotta worry about somebody coming in the door and now getting disrupted.
Yeah, but don't you just do that then before Katie leaves, or, I mean, everybody gets disrupted at work.
It depends.
I mean, it, the only thing I would say is if, if somebody's here, I don't understand, I just don't understand what difference it would make to unlock the door versus lock the door if we're not getting people in at those hours.
But it's usually one person, see, if Katie's here from 9 to 3.
Right. Can't she just plan your day to make sure?
If she's gone, okay, and Steve is gone, then you got Chrissy, if she's working in her cube in the other office, then somebody comes in the door, she's gotta get up, get away from what she's been doing and deal with that customer.
Which is typically what I do, every day anyway.
Which I guess I'd.
But if the.
I'm okay, I mean, I'm still gonna vote yes, and I think that, but I just think that as, as a customer perspective, if we're here, what's the point of not unlocking the door? I mean, cause you're not, you're not having 100 people walk in a day.
No, but I will say that, that if, like after 4 o'clock, there's nobody that comes in.
Right, but again, so then what's the point of not unlocking the door if we're not worried about it? I'm okay with it, let's try it, let's go with this. But to me, I know that at this times, I'm probably gonna get a phone call, I'm gonna be busy, so I plan my day to make sure I'm available during those times, which is what everybody does that has worked with retail people that walk in. So if we're gonna be here, I don't understand why we would just lock the door and not let somebody else in if they have an issue.
I guess I wouldn't classify ourselves as a retail operation. Retail operations to sell stuff.
No.
We're not here to sell stuff.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think retail operations also there to help assist people within a service operation.
In which case they can email, they can text, and they can handle during the business hours.
Again, this is, this is not trying to be argumentative. We do a lot of, this is the minimum we have to do, and making sure that we have it available for members of our community that want to come in, I think is important to think about as well.
I'm gonna try to.
You know, and, and.
George, could you, could you repeat what you said, George, about you don't classify something, I think you said?
I don't classify City Hall in the same terms as I would classify retail business. And maybe my interpretation of the retail business is different. In, in my interpretation or definition of a retail business, it is there to provide usually goods and services. And see, in our situation, our goods and services are providing water, providing sewer, providing the ability to do a building permit. Building permit, they. Building permit, they get ahold of Steve and handle that way to a great extent. So I, I just don't, I don't see it the same as a, as a retail outlet.
Do you not see us here for a customer service perspective? As, as those are our customers that are paying our salaries and taxes?
They are our customers, but normally if they're to us, it's because of an issue maybe with a bill. In which case, you know, an eight to four or an eight to five, if there was a difference in hours to provide a better customer service, I'd wanna be open till six o'clock one night a week.
I would agree with that. Because I have to take off work to come if there's something I wanna do.
But most everything can be handled by phone. Or they can call in and say, hey, when are you available?
Yeah, and, and there's nothing to say that maybe she doesn't set up an appointment after four.
No, 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 no. I, like I said, my only contention was if you're gonna be sitting here and we're paying you to be here, which you're exempt to mean we're paying you no matter what. And I 100% know that you put in more hours than your 40 hours a week that you're normally scheduled because I text you after hours even. But I just don't understand the purpose of locking a door when somebody's here. When if somebody does have that one concern and they wanna come in, why do we not have the availability for them?
I guess I'd also refer back to one situation where I came in here and we had a very disruptive individual in this building. Extremely disruptive.
Yeah, you could have that at any time.
And, and by having the door locked, you at least stop that potential. And when we only have one person in the building, I'm more concerned about it than if we had two people in the building.
Well, and typically, if the doors are unlocked, we're here. If the doors aren't locked, or if the doors are locked, there's nobody here.
Right.
Yeah.
So I understand your point, we'll watch it.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm still okay with this, but I just, that just is kind of one of those. I wanna make sure that we are, and it's not just us, it's in a lot of situations. A lot of times we get stuck on this is the minimum we have to do, not this is what we should do. And, and that's not always the right way for me.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
I would just say that, you know, I'm not overly concerned with it as long as it's not impacting a large number of people. Like if we had been seeing a large grab between four and five, I'd be concerned. But if that's not the case, I don't have concerns.
And we haven't been open past four for what, almost a year now?
It's been a couple of years.
The rule change is dropping from a four o'clock to a noon closure and expanding a Monday and Thursday.
Yeah, because I know Gilbertville is open eight to five, Monday through Thursday, and they're not closed, they're not open at all on Friday, you know, and.
And we did consider that.
That's the other thing that I would consider is four tens makes more sense to me than 38 hours a week instead of 40. But try it, see what it is.
No, it's not four tens, it's four nines.
Eight to five with no break?
Yeah, it's nines. That's four nines, that's 36 hours a week.
Then we're open more than that, go for it. I mean, again, I, I don't think it's gonna impact anybody hugely, but it's just a matter of making sure that we are there when our customers need us to be there.
We, we talked about it.
Yep.